Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Johnston?
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Flack?
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by Karen Peets representing the Bahi faith.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh thou compassionate Lord, thou who are generous and able, we are servants of thine, sheltered beneath thy providence; cast thy glance of favor upon us; give light to our eyes, hearing to our ears, and understanding and love to our hearts; render our souls joyous and happy through thy glad tidings. O Lord, point out to us the pathway of thy kingdom, and resuscitate all of us through the bricks of the Holy Spirit; bestow upon us life everlasting, and confer upon us never-ending honor; unify mankind, and illumine the world of humanity. May we all follow thy pathway, long for thy good pleasure, and seek the mysteries of thy kingdom. O God, unite us and connect our hearts with thy indissoluble bond. Verily, thou art the giver, thou art the kind one, and thou art the almighty.
Thank you. I always love it when Karen comes. Thank you again. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. The council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular council meeting of July 11 and 18, 2019. B, Treasurer's Report. The council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for July showing cash and investments as of July 31, 2019. Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Welsh, Deputy CFO, going to give the Treasurer's Report for the month of July 2019. Total cash and cash equivalents of the city's money totaled $59,426,567, and total long-term investments were $4,866,667, for a total of $64,293,234. This amount is up $9,248,840 for the month of July 11. On Page Two of the report, we've highlighted key receipts for the month. We received airport grants for $47,251, transit federal grants for June of fiscal year 2019 for $95,993, Idaho power franchise fee for $98,601 was down 3.64% from the previous year. We received transit grants from the state of Idaho for May and June of fiscal year 2019 for $99,029. Idaho State sales tax revenue sharing was up 3.21% and came in at $601,158, and Idaho State highway user fees were up 5.48% for $630,059. We also received a large Bennett County tax remittance of $11,012,11,12,267. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. Page Three of the report is for trust funds. Total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds total $1027,164, and total long-term investments are $3,841,227, for a total of $4,868,391. Total cash receipts for the month were $49,469, and total cash disbursements for the month were $51,224, for a net change in long-term investments of $21,262, and a total decrease of $23,017. The next page shows all funds' cash balances with their respective change for the month. You can see the general fund is healthy at $17,508,971. Page Five of the report is Discussion and Analysis for Your Review. And lastly, we have the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong position, cash position, for the city. Negative funds, we have Transit Urban Fund for negative $532,100, which is pending grants, Airport Construction, $485,729, which is also pending grants, and CDPG Fund for $127,918, which is also pending grants that will be coming in shortly. That completes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions, Council? Thank you, Ashley. We'll move on to Agenda Item, C, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. The council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Matthias Edrich to serve as a member of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, filling a long-time vacancy. Mr. Edrich's term will begin August 16, 2019, and will expire January 1, 2023. D, Collective Bargaining Agreement, Fraternal Order of Police. The council may wish to approve adopting the fiscal year 2020 collective bargaining agreement with Portnife Valley Fraternal Order of Police Local Lodge Number 13. E, Resolution Affirmative, let's see, Affirmative Action Plan for Transit Department. The council may wish to adopt a resolution adopting an affirmative action plan for the Pocatello Transit Department during the time period of October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2022. This is an updated version of the prior plans and is a requirement of the Urban Mass Transportation Act of 1964. F, Council Decision, School District Number 25 Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission's denial of request for certificate of appropriateness. The council may wish to adopt this decision approving the appeal from applicant School District Number 25 to overturning the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of applicant's request for a certificate of appropriateness for an addition to Pocatello High School.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication of Proclamations. We have no proclamations, so we will move to Agenda Item Five as a Calendar Review. The council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other members of the council of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 5, at 5:30 PM is a clarification meeting. September 5 at 6 PM is a regular council meeting. September 12 at 9 AM is a work session. Other events, August 17, Ice Cream Zoo Far East event noon to 4 PM at Zoo Idaho. August 17, Annual Portnife River Cleanup Event at 10 AM. August 19, Welcome Back Orange and Black event for ISU students in Old Town. August 25, Last Day of the Season for Ross Park Aquatic Center. August 26, First Date to File for Candidacy begins at 8 AM. City Council Seats 1, 2, and 3. September 2, City officials will be closed for Labor Day. However, garbage, yard waste, and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. September 6, Last Date to File for Candidacy must be received before 5 PM. An annual maintenance for Community Recreation Center, August 19 through September 2. Front desk will remain open, but all other areas will be closed for maintenance. Discounted cat adoptions from Animal Services continues through September 30. School will be starting soon. Remember to slow down in school zones. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, Child Care Denial Appeal Verdict. Katie Burdick will be present to appeal the decision of police department staff which denied Ms. Burdick a childcare license.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Janee Herman, Pocatello Police Licensing. After careful consideration, the Pocatello Police Department denied Katie Burdick a childcare license because she admitted to and was charged with battery, which is a violation of the childcare code. No questions?
Questions, Council? Thank you, Janee. Ms. Burdick?
Hello. So, people make mistakes, as I've done, and so it's a little more information on the battery charge. I was living at Belmont Management. I was in a very bad place in my life emotionally, why it wasn't right. I was also told to plead guilty, excuse me, by the administration of Belmont Management. But I think my life is going better, and I think that I know that I'd be good helping the case with compassion and, you know, love and respect and what you want. Yeah, so. All right, well, I'm done.
Okay. Any questions?
Could I ask upon whom you did the battery?
It was, like I said, past mistakes happen. It was a lady, I don't remember her name, but, I don't remember her name, honestly.
What was your relationship to her?
She was my staff.
Okay, so she worked for you?
Yeah, yeah.
What did the battery consist of?
It was a light hit, and like I said, I felt bad about it, and I feel like I changed, in fact, I know I changed, and, you know, I apologized, and, yeah.
What was your sentence?
I didn't go in, I went to one night in jail. They got me out, and I pled guilty, and I guess, yeah, I don't, I didn't know all the legalities of it, but I just know that I was in jail for one night, so that was all.
Any other questions?
Is the, Mr. Mayor, the childcare license that you were applying for, is that to take care of children in your home, or what would the situation be?
So, I was actually wanting to go to daycare and do it. My person I knew was wanting to hire me, and then she couldn't, so.
Any other questions? So, I want to be clear that you had somebody that was willing to hire you, but she could not hire you, so you do not have a job pending currently.
So, she said she'd be hiring me if I gave the verdict overturned, but other than that, no, I, yeah.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Have you received any counseling or therapy? I got a job supplement, sure.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I, sorry, I do see accounts for once a month, and I, and like I said, I'm a much happier place, and I see my counselor here in Pocatello, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have you had any other incidents since that occasion?
No, not at all, no.
No?
No, actually, no.
Okay. Okay. Questions, Council?
Not for her.
You have any for Janee?
Yeah, I have some more.
Okay. Does anybody have any for Katie before she leaves? Okay, thank you.
Janee, okay, it's been alluded to that there was a battery here. What was the date of that?
It was in 2011. Do you want the actual?
Yeah, if it's 2011, so that was eight years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Have there been any other incidents in her life?
Not that would violate the childcare code.
Okay.
There have been a couple disturbances since that time period, but like I said, nothing that would violate the code.
Okay.
You said those are since then, not before?
Mm-hmm, after the fact, 2013 and 2014.
So, nothing she was charged for?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Nope, disturbances.
Okay, any other questions for Janee, while she's up there? Okay, thank you. Okay, Council?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Burdick, I'm glad to hear that you're in a better place now with your life, and that you're happier now and not having the same issues. We have a responsibility for the safety of our citizens, including children, and we have a responsibility to follow our ordinances. So, because of that, I would move to uphold the police department's decision.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. If you'll just get with Katie and let her know everything that's, thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven is a short plat matter subdivision. Sunny Matter, represented by Matt Baker of Summit Land Surveyor, has submitted a short plat application to subdivide 4,189.54 square feet of land into two residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 526 and 528 East Hayden Street and is to be known as Matter Subdivision.
Yeah, we're not very talkative. I mean, we've been talking for hours, I guess. We talked everybody out.
I don't want to cut the call.
Yeah, I'd at least like to talk to somebody planning, because when I do my math on this, it seems like awful small lots.
Okay, Matthew.
Mayor and Council Members, Matthew Lewis.
So, the way I'm looking at it, Matthew, we're looking at 2,000 in less than 100 feet, 2,100 feet.
Yeah, they're existing homes, probably built, I mean, I guess, probably 1920s. Kind of zone commercial general, so they're legal, not conforming. Simply, they're just subdividing, don't have them in on the lot side, so, and they would meet their side setbacks.
So, there are existing homes already there?
Yes.
So, they're going to tear them down?
No, they're just subdividing them out. They're two existing homes that are on one lot, and they're just splitting those.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Supposedly to sell, then? Is that, that was more?
They could do that if they subdivided out, sure.
So, they're just making one parcel into two?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven for the subdivision of the lots located at 526 and 528 East Hayden Street and be known as Matter Subdivision. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Manon and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Short Plat Newbound Subdivision. Gemshed Rummanani.
Rumman?
Gemshed, thank you. Gemshed Rumman, Rummanani, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a short plat application to subdivide 1.82 acres, more or less, into six residential lots. The subdivision is located at 3095 and 3145 D'Artagnan Drive and is to be known as Newbound Subdivision. Council?
You want to come and explain what's happening here, what you're representing?
Mitch, would you have Mitch do this one? Matt, thanks.
Sure. I'm Mitchell Greer, Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying, 600 East Oak in Pocatello. What we're trying to do is, all these property owners in the subdivision that's adjacent to Mr. Rummanani's property want to extend their parcels back about 25 feet or so, and so they've all kind of got together as a group and approached Mr. Rummanani about purchasing his property. We thought this would be an ideal place to look at some of those new ordinances that we enacted back in the early days about block line adjustments and things like that, but that doesn't totally fit in this case, I guess, and so we're here before you to ask for a plat, which is going to replat the Wildlife Estates subdivision, that section of Wildlife Estate subdivision, to extend those properties and make it part of these existing lots. That's basically what we're going to do. There's no services, there's no, we're just extending.
It's a friendly neighborhood decision.
A few, you know, a few years ago, we would have wrote a couple legal descriptions, and it would have happened at the title company, and nobody would have known about it, but we have new ordinances now, and that's why we're here.
What's behind that property?
It's vacant. It's a big.
Is it a canyon, or?
There's some, there's some land there that at some point, there's probably going to be development on it, and then there's a canyon.
Mayor, I move that we approve this short plat for the Newbound Subdivision.
Second.
Cheetham was quick on that one. We got a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetham. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Police Vehicle Sole Source Expenditure and Declaration Request. The council may wish to accept the recommendation of police department staff and authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the request for the following items. A, Declare the purchase of nine 2020 Ford Explorer Hybrid, one 2024 Ford Explorer Hybrid replacement, two 2020 Dodge Charger all-wheel-drive equipment up to fit the vehicles for police use, and one 2017 Dodge Durango used from Bancorp to be a valid sole source expenditure. Bancorp quoted a lower cost than the state bid price on the vehicles and will outfit the vehicles with all the necessary equipment and deliver the vehicles ready to use. And B, Approve the purchase from Bancorp in the amount of $735,161. Funds for the purchase are available in the police department's fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the sole source expenditure by declaring this as a sole source purchase, and that we approve the purchase from Bancorp in the amount of $735,161.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Bid Acceptance Agreement, Sleepy Hollow Lift Station Improvements Project. The council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Sleepy Hollow Lift Station Improvement Project. A, Accept the lowest responsive bid received on August 6, 2019, from A-plus contractors in the amount of $181,772.50, and B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the city of Pocatello and A-plus contractors in the amount of $181,772.50 for the Sleepy Hollow Lift Station Improvements Project, subject to legal department review. If approved, work will start near the end of August and is scheduled for completion within 45 days of the start date. Funds for this project are available in the Water Pollution Control Capital Account. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the low responding bid with A1-plus contractors, that we authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Piggyback Bid for TASER Units Police Department. The council may wish to accept recommendations of police staff and approve the following piggyback bid. Purchase of 87 TASER 7 units and receive three free units, a total of 90 units, purchase price of $299,280 from Axon Enterprise Incorporated on a piggyback bid through NPP.gov. Purchase price includes everything necessary to, let's see, to transition from the police department's current TASER units to their new models. If approved, the council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the bid. Funds for the purchase are available through capital contingency as discussed at August 8, 2019 work session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move to approve Agenda Item Number Eleven, the piggyback bid for TASER units in the police department.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
The mayor's signature.
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make an amendment to that motion to approve the, your signature on documents related to the bid.
Authorize?
Authorize the signature. So, do we need to have another vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got an amendment to that motion to authorize the mayor's signature. Do I have a second on that amendment?
Second.
We have a motion to amend and a second to the amendment by Cheetham and Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Hmm. Yes.
Yes.
Now that you've confused me, thank you, Rick. I'm just going to start asking for Bray to just make all the motions tonight. Agenda Item Twelve, Fiscal Year 2020 Departmental Fee Resolution. The council may wish to adopt a resolution with Exhibits A through Y setting fees for fiscal year 2020, October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. The exhibits are as outlined, A through Y, in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we adopt a resolution with Exhibits A through Y, setting the fees for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen is an ordinance, 13A, an ordinance amending Section 2.06.050 of the Pocatello Municipal Code, providing the city council's annual salary be increased by to $13,148.98, and beginning January, let's see, beginning January 1, 2020, from the amount last set, January 1, 2018, and providing that the mayor's annual salary be increased to $86,056.88, beginning January 1, 2020, from the amount last set, January 1, 2018. Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read? Councilwoman Adamson?
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item 13A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Connie, motion by Adamson, second by Cheetham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Kirk, could you please read the ordinance?
Certainly. First of all, to my ophthalmologist, Dr. Lawless, I still read without my glasses. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Section 2.06.050 of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, 1983, providing that the annual salary for members of the city council shall be $13,148.93 effective January 1, 2020.
98 cents.
What did I say?
93 cents.
It says 93.
Did you need these?
No. Don't mind, says 93 cents.
Okay, this is wrong here. Here is 98.
I've got 93.
Okay, 93.
That's not even a candy bar anymore.
It's three, it's a nickel.
I know.
Go ahead.
Providing that the annual salary of the mayor shall be $86,056.88. Providing That The Annual Salary Of The Mayor Shall Be $86,056.88 Effective January 1, 2020. And Providing That This Ordinance Shall Be Effective For All Set Officials Commencing On January 1, 2020.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass. Now, before we call the roll, I know there's some discussion here, there's been.
Not on this part.
There's no discussion here?
Is this voting on the ordinance?
Yes, now we'll be voting on the ordinance.
There is some discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I knew that there was some discussion that wanted to happen, and so.
You know, I objected to this increase from the very first time it was proposed in an official council meeting. And despite Chubbick's 30% increase in salary raises, I think this council can do better. We just saw an article in the newspaper for the last few days about how AEDs save the life of a citizen. We don't have enough of those in our police cars. I think this council needs to back that off to a 6% raise and use that money to put more AEDs in police cars.
Any thing else?
Okay, I would endorse the 6%.
Okay, anything else?
I would just like to do both. I agree that that's a need, too.
I think that it's a need for AEDs, although I think that, and I'll just go on record as saying, I think that it's, I think that there's a way to do both if we need to do both. I don't disagree with that, and I don't know what an AED costs, but I'm sure you're not going to fill 90 vehicles or 35 vehicles with a couple thousand dollars here, so.
We can put six more in if the council would back off to a 6% raise.
Okay. I still would, I would support both. I'm with Linda, I would support both. I think that the, I do know that, you know, I appreciate you bringing up that Chubbick has a 33% increase, and you don't increase just because somebody else does, but I think it's a necessary increase, and I do believe that we can task our police chief to see what we can do to get some AEDs, and that's definitely an important thing.
We just bought tasers.
We just bought tasers. So, okay, any other comments? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheetham?
No.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 13B, An Ordinance Approving The Fiscal Year 2020 Appropriations Ordinance. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Adamson?
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 13B Be, whoops, Be Read Only By Title And Placed On Final Passage For Publication And That The Entire Ordinance Be Submitted For Publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurik. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Kirk, could you remove your glasses and read the ordinance?
Why circle, Your Honor? Let's see, An Ordinance Of The City Of Pocatello, A Municipal Corporation Of Idaho Appropriating $128,592,571 For The 2020 Fiscal Year To Defray All Necessary Expenses And Liabilities Of The City, Providing For The Objects And Purposes For Which Such Appropriations Are Made And The Amount Appropriate For Each Object Or Purpose, Leaving Ad Valorem Taxes In The Amount Of $31,186,186 For The Fiscal Year Beginning The First Day Of October 2019 And Ending The 30th Day Of September 2020 Upon All Of The Taxable Property Within The City Of Pocatello To Provide Revenue To Pay Current General Liability Insurance, Street, Recreation, Cemetery, Airport, Public Library, Capital Improvement Expenses And To Pay Interest And Principal On General Obligation Bonds Of The City Of Pocatello. Providing That A Certified Copy Of This Ordinance Shall Be Filed With County Commissioners Of Vanik County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, And With Secretary of State Of The State Of Idaho. Providing For This Ordinance To Take Effect Upon Its Passage, Approval, And Publication According To Law, The Rule Requiring That An Ordinance Be Read On Three Separate Occasions Having Been Dispensed With.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass. Now, before we call the roll, I just want to give the council an opportunity if there's any comments or any discussion.
I think we've done some really important things with this budget. Taking care of staff in all dimensions was the most important in my book. I think there's some other things that are kind of necessary that we have in the budget, but I also think there's some extraneous stuff, and I'm hard pressed to decide whether I vote for what's important and what's necessary, or I vote against extraneous, and I'm kind of leaning towards voting against extraneous, because I kind of have a feeling that I'll be a minority vote on this.
Well, we'll see. Any other comments?
Just want to make one comment, that we made it our priority to take care of all of our employees and make their raises as high as they could possibly be, and all three groups, the firefighters, the police, and the general employees, and we managed to do that, and so I'm very pleased with that part of this budget. And I think it's a good solid budget overall, but we set that as a priority and we achieved it, so.
So, any other comments? I'm just going to thank the council for the work. We start this budgeting process in March?
End of February.
End of February, March, and we meet twice a month, three times a month sometimes on this budget. This is not a budget that the council's taken lightly. We focus and we work on this for half the year to put this together, and I just, I just want the council to know, there's some, sometimes there's some heated discussion and sometimes there isn't, and the council has done an incredible job putting a budget together, and I think everybody could find something in the budget that they either like or they don't like, but I'm very proud of this budget and where we are with it, and the council has done an incredible, yemen's job, and I am very appreciative of them, so thank you very much for all the work that you've done. With that, Connie, will you call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 14 As Discussion Items. The, we do not have anybody that signed up for a discussion items, so I would take this moment again just to thank the council for all the work that they did today. It was a long day, and I appreciate them hanging in there and doing everything that we've done today, and so thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.